All right, folks, if everyone will drift to their seats. We will get this show on the road in a few moments. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors, Capital Improvements Plan to Order. If the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Lauffer. Is not, doesn't appear to be here or online. Supervisor Breslin. Does not appear to be here or online. Supervisor Hedlund.
Here.
Is here Supervisor Score. Is here Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Is here Supervisor Shackleton. Is present Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Here.
Is here Supervisor Wilson. Is here Supervisor Quinn. Does not appear to be here yet or online. Supervisor Jetson.
Here.
Is here Supervisor Bishan. Is here Supervisor Kneer.
Here.
Is here Supervisor Barrier. Is here Supervisor Lyon. Is here Supervisor Vogel. Is here Supervisor Story. Is present Supervisor Vandermeulen. Is here Supervisor Burnt. Is attending Supervisor Morehouse. Is here Supervisor Hagan. Is present Supervisor Thomas. Is present Supervisor Prochnow. Is here Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert does not be here. Supervisor Quinn is just joining us. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Is here Supervisor Bauer. Is here Supervisor Wolf. Is present Supervisor Hartung. Is here.
So is Chair McCullough.
Oh, Chair McCullough.
It's all good.
Draft Capital Improvement Plan. Chris, you want to?
All right, before I get started, I just want to tell you, make an announcement to you, to tell you that we have with us tonight Mike Rosnow from National Grid. They are the developer of the Muddy Creek Solar Project. Mike's sitting back here. He came, he'll probably present some comments during public comment tonight, but he's going to be available between these two meetings. If you have specific questions and you weren't able to get to the open house yesterday and you would like to ask him questions about that Muddy Creek Solar Project, he is here specifically for that purpose. So. Okay, so we are going to try to walk you through, kind of lay some groundwork for you. Biata has provided you with some documents so that you can reference them. It contains the 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan. And then Dan has a PowerPoint that he's going to walk through, kind of to provide all of the background. So I don't know, I don't know that we decided which direction we wanted to do that in. Let's go with Dan and then Biata. Yep, you. Oh yeah, Dan and Dustin.
Okay, so the big part of the whole capital improvement plan is obviously the possible addition of the Highway Department. We put together a presentation here, just kind of explaining in detail the conclusion of a facility study that was done at the Highway Department and the needs for an addition and a remodel for the Highway Department. So the current vehicles, current vehicles are obviously a lot larger than they used to be back in 1983 when the original Highway Department was built. Vehicles do not fit in the original parking bays, little room to properly clean equipment. Equipment is stored outside, as well as the Sheriff's Office was, we did a study with the Sheriff's Office as well with their space need. They have a similar issue. Obviously, the size of the vehicles are a lot larger. Increase in recreational enforcement vehicles, so they have a need as well with their equipment. So obviously, that's the standard plow truck from 1983 versus 2025, as you can see the difference. So the current highway facility, we are situated on a 30, approximately 35 acre piece of property. It consists of the primary highway shop, cold storage facility, three storage buildings, three salt storage buildings, a fuel island, obviously parking, and some material storage. So the main shop, just broke out the main shop here, to better explain that. So the, the main shop is 43,000 square feet, of which there's approximately 19,000 square feet that is utilized for parking our plow trucks and our equipment. The shop itself, where we repair the equipment, is approximately 16,000 square feet. And then the office space, as you can kind of see in between there, makes up the difference of approximately 8,200 square feet. With the main office, we have an additional 2,000 square feet and then the cold storage unit is 16,000 square feet. So this is the cold storage facility. As you can see, what makes up the portion of the Highway Department is approximately 16,000 square foot. The Sheriff's Department makes up an additional 4,000 square feet roughly that. And they have their exterior storage for their impound and whatnot, what they bring in there. So typically, what's stored in that cold storage is, we do have some equipment, but we do have other supplies, tires, concrete materials, all that stuff that is usually in our cold storage. As you can see, this is a picture of, actually, this was last week when I took these pictures, but that's a typical day at the Highway Department where we store our equipment. So majority of our equipment actually sits outside. That's just kind of an overall view. You can't see, off to the right of this, there's actually more equipment parked out there. And believe me, this was not staged. So this is our shop. As you can see, we have, we have six mechanics that work in this shop at a given time. They have one bay for each mechanic. Obviously, there's times where we have to park in the stall to get equipment in there to get repaired. If a tractor's down and we can't move it, we have to repair it in the alleyway, as you can see. And very difficult to park, to get in and out of that. This is our storage area where we park our equipment. As you can see, it's very cramped. What's highlighted in that, that red circle area that Dan highlighted, that's where our wash bay is. So when we have to wash equipment, that's where it is and how we got a jockey in to get to it. This is just a picture, kind of representing how a truck gets into our wash bay. So like I said, it is very tight. When we had to get that truck out of there, it probably took us approximately, I'm not going to lie, 10 minutes to get it out of there, to try to jockey it in without tearing the plow off the front and hitting the truck in the front or hitting the truck in the back there. As you can see, that is the wash bay, about the same size as the plow truck. Don't hit it too many times, Dan. That's what you always yell at us for. As you can see, that's the depth of the wash bay. It just gives you a kind of comparison on how small it is and accessible. So the proposed solution, so what the study concluded is what Dunn County Highway needed to accommodate our current equipment facility and needs, as well as the possibility of expanding if equipment gets bigger, where we have some room to grow. So what was proposed was a precast concrete building structure that would be not attached to our current building, but it would be an addition outside of our current structure. It would have about a 50-plus year lifespan with a 72,000 square foot storage facility that where we would park equipment, as well as taking that material that was in the cold storage facility that we have currently and we could move it into this building. On that building, it would have a wash bay, a drive-in, drive-out wash bay with an exterior covered lean-to on one side, so we can park some of the track equipment, like your backhoes, dozers, where we can have a roof over that. And then, I don't know if we're talking about the remodel of the existing building, but we would, we would also move all of our equipment out of our existing building and we would remodel our existing facility to accommodate our, our shop area for mechanics to have better accessibility coming in and out. This is just a preliminary sketch. This is not set in stone on where it would be located, but that's just, like I said, a preliminary drawing of, just gives you a kind of reference on the size of the building. That's a 3D model of it. As you can see, the existing buildings on the left there and then the one that's kind of in gray there is our storage, cold storage unit, and then what would be proposed there. And it gives you a little layout. As you can see, this is just a preliminary remodel of the existing building. We would increase our office space where our current shop is to add like a conference room, some more additional office spaces. We would have like standard pickup parking, pickup truck parking in that, that area. And then on the north side of that, where our current storages would be where our mechanics store, or shop would be. And then each bay would have garage doors coming in and out, so we can get trucks in and out a lot easier. So this is our cold storage unit. So the needs analysis that was completed, obviously, the Sheriff's Department needs additional space for their needs as well. So what the intent would be is to take our cold storage unit and basically turn that over to the Sheriff's Department for their needs. Kind of, kind of shows a layout of what, what would be proposed.
You can, you can talk about all the money.
All right. So, so as we're in this capital improvement plan, I just, one thing, I guess, to clarify, what is proposed in the capital improvement plan is $700,000 to do design for the highway building. So this isn't to actually do the highway building, but it's a significant cost expenditure and based on the assumption that you would move forward with that. So that's kind of why we're showing this full plan and how that can play out over time. But just so you're aware, the capital improvement plan this year is just that, that design expense. So. You can see the, the cost estimates. We're looking at a couple of phases of the project, obviously, building that new building. And then we would be taking all of that equipment out of that building in order to, to do a redesign of the, of the existing space. So, and that, that second one would happen either a year or two and you'll see, and I provided everybody with a document that we're, we're looking at a couple of year delay. This does not currently include the Sheriff's Department, so that's also another thing that would be dependent about getting that in, getting everything out in order to do that, but you're looking at about 1.4 million to kind of redesign this space. And that, I need to qualify, all of these numbers are estimates that were provided based on 2024 building expenses. Okay, so cost of construction hasn't gone down a really long time, so wouldn't expect it. So you can see the costs of the, of the additional building and the renovations. Once again, this does not include the sheriffs. This is really just kind of talking about highway here. So if you bring the sheriffs in, it'd be another 1.4 million. All right, so the financial impact, and so this is where we're going to get to that big 11 by 17 piece of paper that I provided you. So we've talked a lot as, as it relates to borrowing and, and how that kind of process goes through about not increasing taxes kind of being that goal. And, and that goal kind of falls around the debt service that we pay, which is the annual amount of money we pay off on our debt. So that document right there is all, mainly all estimates. So this is assuming a 20-year payment on the highway building. So if you were to borrow for the highway building, we're assuming that it would be a 20-year repayment on that. And we are trying to stabilize the debt service. That example includes perpetually borrowing $3 million on an annual basis, which is something that we think we've all talked about. So we just want to demonstrate what that would look like through that process. Obviously, all these things have to be approved as their time comes through, but this is just to demonstrate what that would look like over time. So we are proposing Phase 1 happening in 2027 and Phase 2 happening in 2029. So you'll kind of see those and I'll call that out. And then I do just have it in there that we have the solar geothermal thing. So that is borrowing. There will be debt service associated with that, but that is coming kind of out of a different pot that's not going to be impacting the levy because we're using the cost savings that, that, that project is going to go. So I qualify that, so if you ever see this again and you say, Dan, it said this number and it's higher this year, that, that's what's, that's what's happening there. But. Moving on, so this is a copy of that page that you have right there. I provided you with a copy that you still are going to need some binoculars to read, but I knew this was going to be really bad right there. So I'm going to go over some of the different pieces of this to help you understand what that looks like and to go through that. So over on the left side of that page is our current debt service. So you'll look through there, year by year, that's how much money we are due to pay on the existing debt service that we have. Okay. This does include what we will. Yes, it does include the borrowing that we haven't yet done this year. So the projections based on the borrowing that we haven't yet done in this year, but has been approved. So that's what that repayment schedule looks like. So what that says is if you never borrow it again in 2034, would be the last debt service payment that you have and you can kind of see that, what that projection looks like. So that's the left side of the, of that document. So then, as you look through this, you will see across the top, each of those verticals is, is an individual borrow. So borrowing 3 million here, borrowing 3 million, 11 million, 3 million, 3 million, 4.6 million, 3 million. And then I want to call out the very last one because that is going to reflect that perpetual 3 million. So I kind of circled it as you, as you go down there, where they just kind of put that number in. That's to be able to make sure that our, our numbers come across right there. Obviously, as we get into making estimates in 15 years, they just put a number in. But that's demonstrating what that would look like if you were to continue to borrow 3 million a year. That number is.
Higher than what we owe.
Yes, that, yeah, so that, as, as Chris is pointing out, I'm going to come back. I included on the slide, but there's a total that comes down over here. That's just the total of all of those payments. It doesn't really apply to anything. It's the total amount that we would have to pay out. So paying off all of that, that's the total of, of all of those numbers. It does not reflect our current debt. It reflects how much we have to pay over the next so many years, but that's what that number is. Yeah, it, yes, it includes the interest. All right. Got where it was. There we go. So I did just want to call out, and I think we had talked before about when we, when we do borrowing, it's a little different than your traditional loan. So we do have the ability to structure what that repayment looks like. So I just pulled out two examples here. You can see in one of them where you can see interest and principal being paid off in the first year. And then this, this is actually the 11 million highway one, which is actually delaying some of that principal payment. And, and once again, that is just some of the work that we can do with that goal in mind of keeping that debt service number at a, at a stable number because that debt service one is the one that would impact the levy. So that's kind of, as you say, how do you do that? That's how it's done, is by kind of adjusting how those payments are to say, I want to pay this much this year and, or I want to delay these payments for four years and then I'll, then we'll start those payments and it can be high-low. Every year it could be changed. So that's where a lot of the fluctuation can happen. All right, this one is just a combination of, of the far-left column and the far-right columns. I smashed them together because this is kind of what gets you that, that combined debt service. So that's looking at what our current debt service payment is, plus what the, the new debt service would be, assuming all of those borrows. So that's where you get over to this combined debt service column, which is kind of selected here. And so that's kind of demonstrating that we're maintaining that same debt service number within, in a, a little bit, I think. Might go about $50,000 up or down in that, over that 10-year span. And then you start to see it tail off once those other debts, once we kind of hit that 20-year mark and it starts to tail off. So that's what that looks like. And that's just kind of demonstrating, trying to demonstrate, this is what it can look like if you were to borrow those two projects in '27 and '29. We can do that, including the $3 million while maintaining a stable debt service. And that's clear to everyone, right?
It is, if I may, I would say as much as it may look like we're trying to sell you a plan, that's not what we're trying to do. So I'm going to do a little bit of a reminder of what we've talked about in the past about roles. So it's the roles of the department head and the senior management to ask for what they believe that they need in order to continue to run their operations. It's our role to tell you how that could happen or can't happen, if you would like to consider that. And then it's your role to decide if you want to do that. So as much as it may sound like we sort of worked all this out and you, the decision's been made, by far not. We wanted to know whether it was even feasible to bring it to you to say it was doable. And this is the methodology in which we'd make it doable.
Yeah, and to add to that, I mean, the debt service, and I had a slide around assumptions, right? That is assuming a 20-year borrow. If you don't want to do a 20-year borrow, we can look at that. You're likely going to impact debt service and, and we can structure that however you would like. But yes, we make those assumptions based on the feedback we've received over, over time. And I did just want to call out that we're kind of throwing out these words of debt service and debt levy. Debt service really is the amount of money that we need to pay back in order to pay off our, our debts. The debt levy is something that does exist in statute and is talked about. And I just want to, once again, kind of clarify as we get into the solar project, the debt levy. We will, we are not going to be increasing our debt levy in order to pay for the solar, even though we will still have debt service on that. So those numbers, as much as they have always matched themselves one-to-one, when we get into that solar, you're not going to see that, that those numbers match one-to-one anymore because we're not levying for that specific debt. That's the end of the slide, so. Supervisor Bauer. Just a moment.
Thank you. Maybe I missed it somewhere, but the 750, 700-plus thousand on the main design, is that just for a one building or is that for all three, the sheriffs and the remodel? Or is it just a, the new one?
Just the new building.
So there will be more expense on, on redesigning the mother too yet, coming up.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hopefully, a much smaller number. Supervisor Barrier.
So going back one slide. The far-right combined debt service, the years 2047 and 48, all the way at the bottom. Those are about $1 million less than what was before. What, what's going on there? 2040. Should I just point, like get up there and point? Okay, go, keep going to the right, yeah, those. So the, the 4 million, 4 million, whatever, right? That's less than the previous years, which were about 5 million? So I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so yeah, you got to kind of work your way left. And you can see that's when the 20 years of the original 11 million is coming off the books. But the 4.6 million is still on.
Is it? This column here? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, I get it. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, those totals kind of add up across. Supervisor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was curious, since if we don't need the full 3 million that we're borrowing, could that potentially reduce the amount needed for the highway because we would have leftover?
You're referring to in 2027 to forego the 3 million and just borrow 11 or?
Or if we had like a million five left in, you know, 2025, because we only spent a million five, could that potentially reduce what we would need to borrow?
So when we borrow, we have to spend that money on what we said we would spend that money on or auditors get angry. So, but we could get to the point where we don't need to borrow that much, so we, so we don't. And then we would borrow, let's say we borrowed 1.5 million, that would decrease all of those numbers over time. And then likely, we would restructure all of those bond payouts in order to kind of keep everything balanced. And that, that may result in moving some of that principal payment on this one up a little bit in order to potentially decrease some of the overall costs. If that makes sense.
Well, I thought we were, we thought we would borrow the 3 million, but it, so that it would even out, so we wouldn't, you know.
I, I think the answer you're looking for, so there wouldn't, it wouldn't be the circumstance that we would have 1.5 million leftover at the end of the year. It would be the circumstance that we would look at the next year's borrowing and say, oh, we only need to borrow 1.5. And yes, that would impact all the numbers going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, any one change to this results in a call to PMA and, hey, can you redo all of this? They're very happy to, to do that. Supervisor Hedlund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 700-plus thousand, is that, get us a plan that is bid ready? You know, it's plumbing and concrete and all the goodies that go inside.
Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the highway, 11-point-plus million. I'm trying to read what it says about interest. Do we have an agreed amount of, of interest for, for borrowing that amount of money?
No, no, it's not agreed upon. That's an estimate based on.
So what's the estimate? I mean, how did you, I mean, is it, is it previous thing or best? You know, I mean, how do you, what, what did you use for, for an interest rate?
We used our municipal advisors put this together. So that interest rate that's listed there is 4.5. And so that's them just using market values and analyzing. And so that's them just using market values and analyzing what that's going to be like and then making what is likely to be a safe number. Most of the time when they put these together, they're providing you with an interest rate that they expect would be the highest number you would see.
Because we've done much better than that.
Right.
Yes, so the they they give us a very conservative estimate, particularly the further out it gets. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, sir. If we built that, you know, building, how close would we be to have enough room for all the equipment? Is that? We just, you know, just barely get all the equipment in, or there's a little room in case we do add some some more materials to it?
Right, so this option is the, if you remember from the. He's on the highway committee. We did see some options. This is the biggest option. So this is the option that actually provides a little bit of room for growth.
Supervisor Barrier.
Over here. So the cost for the plans for the new building are about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know how much these things cost, but that seems like a lot. Can you kind of explain why that's so complex and why it's that expensive?
Yeah, Dustin can. I believe a lot of that is it's a calculated percentage of the of the overall cost is where those numbers come from, but.
Yeah, so those costs include like all the design costs, the environmental documents, everything that would have to go into it. As well as the oversight. So you would have a consultant that would oversee this project. When it's being constructed, so that would be included in that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost.
Okay, thank you.
There we go. Supervisor Jensen.
Is are we reinventing the wheel here with this design or is there? Are you looking at other departments across the state, what they've designed for their highway shops? And if so, is it something that you could say, hey, let's have your plans and and work through? A lower cost on that seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So ju- just to give you kind of a perspective of what a brand new highway department typically costs. So this actually, this picture is St. Croix County Highway Department. As you can see, we had two options. We could, we could do a concrete precast building or we could do a steel metal building. Steel metal building is a little bit cheaper, but long term, it's not the best solution. Obviously, with our plow equipment, all the salt, all the stuff that we bring into it, steel is not probably the preferred option. So. We opted to to pursue a concrete precast similar to, I'll just put it in perspective, like with the city of Menominee that just built. So that is exactly what this building would be. Made out of was basically that same same material. Guess we're not really inventing, reinventing the wheel. It's just, that's what you would see. Correct. We are just building it to park equipment in. Just, I'm gonna just, we have a lot of money invested in this equipment, three to four hundred thousand dollars for an average plow truck. So. That investment sits outside not all of our equipment, but some of it does. So St. Croix's facility was just under thirty million. Eau Claire, who just built one just recently, I believe, was right around a thirty to thirty five million. And I've heard. Stories that Marathon County is going through a process right now, and they're upwards of fifty million to build a a whole new facility.
So. I think to speak to the question I think you're asking. It's not just a matter of like, hey, th- these are great blueprints that do the same thing we need. It's the engineering on the land and the available space we have. Related to, and you know, things like access and what the underlying. Structure that we're going to be putting the concrete down on as well as the ongoing. Process of supervising, and that's a big chunk of it. Is that ongoing as it's being built? That's a big chunk of the engineering cost. So the just sort of the blueprint part of it isn't isn't that much of that seven hundred and fifty thousand. I think that's the what you were looking for.
That's a rectangle.
Okay. It'd be great if there was a plan set just already built and.
Supervisor Shackleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think you kind of answered what. I was kind of wondering as well that a lot of the cost, because I think the cost of building anything like that is. I know it sounds bad, but reasonable compared to what other counties have done. So I mean, and costs are only going to go up. So I mean, I think that's probably doable. I think everybody's just a little bit. Nervous about the. Seven hundred and fifty thousand for the designing and stuff, but if that. Includes somebody being there, not as a general, but somebody overseeing the whole time, I guess that would explain. Some of the costs, which at first I didn't realize that somebody would be there. Throughout the whole project, making sure everything went right. So. That being said, it just seems like that's a big chunk. If for some reason we. Approve this and we're going forward and for some reason the building doesn't happen, are we out the full seven fifty or? Like if we get blueprints, stuff like that, and they don't end up building it, we're, are we still on the hook for seven hundred and fifty? Or it's like, okay, well, the blueprints are two hundred thousand. Designing whatever, and we don't end up doing the project for some reason, whatever. Do we get any of that money back or do they still get seven hundred and fifty, even though they're not really overseeing the whole thing?
We would basically be on the hook for that payment.
So who is who is this through?
Yeah. So the 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 design would would all be bid out.
Okay.
And like I said, these are estimated costs on what the analysis presented. Okay. So like I said, the the design portion was right around that five hundred thousand, and then the consultant to kind of oversee the project was that additional cost.
Okay.
Yeah, so expected costs and bid it out and see, you know, hopefully life is great and we come in less than that, but.
And the the design, this piece was completed on a bid for just the study, the space study that Cedar Court did.
Thank you.
And I'm sure there's probably some things contractually or as part of the bid process that we can put in to say, obviously, yes, there's your architectural costs, but. You know. Yep.
I think we wanted to go through the whole scenario of the whole building piece because we wanted you to know exactly that, that if we invested seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars now. If it was that full cost and we decided not to build a building, that would not be a great use of. So by saying yes to the design. There's many steps from here to the building, but you're essentially beginning to say yes to the building.
Yeah, I mean, it's and and it's because it's such a big bite that it's capital improvements project, this workshop instead of. Well, that's within reasonable county scope of engineering. We'll just do that. That's why it's here before you all. Is because that's a big apple to take a bite out of. Supervisor Burnt.
So. This would make basically make sure that every single vehicle. On our property has a home, is looked after properly and and has adequate space to maneuver and. Clean, et cetera.
Yeah, correct. And then it would also give us some room to to expand if we whatever, purchase ten more pieces of equipment.
Awesome.
Yeah, well, and it it's worth noting that there are also, it also gives us some savings in labor costs. Instead of having to move every truck in a sliding puzzle, you just pull in, you pull out, and that gives us, gives our workers. A lot more productive time that isn't trying to move maneuver in a space that isn't big enough of their equipment.
And I think in the past Dustin has talked about the labor time and cleaning the vehicles. So if you think of that, how many plow trucks you get eighteen out, something like that, right? Eighteen trucks come back that have to get all that salt cleaned off of them. They're waiting in line, trying to find their way into that, and we're paying them while they're waiting. So if we can make that process faster, we're going to clean better and in less time.
And I think also just having just been going through and looking back at all the stuff at the Mabel Tainer from when we did our renovation, I think that that seven hundred. Number seems about fair and as comparison to what. The overall projected cost is, I think that's about a good proportion to start out with, so.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. The time you get on the list and it gets to you, a lot of things have been said you want to say, but. I was actually in two of the buildings today. I stopped by to visit with Dustin a little bit this afternoon. So I was in the cold storage building and walked, we walked through the shop on the way out there and. You know, obviously you can tell by my conversation here that I'm in favor of this happening, understand the cost and or. How we got to be careful to do that, but you know, when you being part of the highway department committee. And seeing the cost of this equipment, you know, that's that's going through the door and how long it lasts, you know, even putting it under a nice roof and where it might be. Temperature controlled is still, we're still only going to get X number of years out of it, you know, and but let's maximize those years, I guess, and. You know, get our equipment. In the best. Position it can be in so that we get the max life out of it. And then the the only other thing, maybe a quick question for you, Dustin, or Dan, or both, or whoever. We have outline shops and. You know, could could, what's the picture look like to potentially? Maybe do away with one of those if if we get this facility that can really get us out to where we need to get and service the. Client, the constituents that we need to service in some of these outline shop. I know we're we're kind of spread out. I get why we have them. You know, maybe if you got a comment on that.
Yeah, I guess. So we have five outline shops besides this facility. And the original intent to if we build this facility is to shut down our Rock Falls shop. It's a very old outdated facility right at the intersection of eighty five and H, if you're familiar with that. It doesn't have any running water. It's just. Our equipment barely fits in it. So that would be the intent is to take those two trucks and move them back to Menominee. Where we would have the capacity to do that. So that would be a cost savings too as well, just to kind of shut that building down. Very expensive just to heat that little, I don't even know what, two thousand square foot building and has no insulation, nothing in it, so. That would be the intent.
And 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 we actually did just talk about this like last week about coming up with a plan for all of those buildings in a long term plan. I know from a highway committee standpoint, you're aware there's some 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 things that we have to deal with in order to do that, and there may be some compromise, but.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, Supervisor Wolf.
Thank you. My question is. We're talking about a a building with a fifty year lifespan and a twenty year note. Is it built big enough so that in fifteen years you don't come back and say, we need another building just like this?
That's the intent, and that's why we we paid somebody to do a study for us to determine that.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Bashan.
So with this, you know, you're hoping that we keep the machines in better working order. Are you hoping to extend the life of them? And or increase the resale value once we're done with them?
All of the above, yes.
Also reduce me, reduce ongoing maintenance costs.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you there's no no ounce of rust on any of those trucks right there that you can see ours would be are all rusted, so.
So we'll get some money back in the long run.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen and then Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yeah, for Dustin there. Excuse me. I think unless I'm misinformed, but some of our satellite shops, that's where the routes originate from. So if you moved all the trucks in the satellite shops to Menominee, the driver would have to drive to do the route. That he does, like for instance, up by Sand Creek or whatever, whatever the route is. Am I am I correct on that or not?
Yeah, so our outline shops are utilized in the winter months.
Yeah.
For plowing purposes. In the summer months, depending on where our construction projects are, that equipment is moved to Menominee. Not necessarily all the equipment comes back to Menominee, but majority of our plow trucks that we utilize are also our dump trucks that we haul. Materials with lime rock asphalt in the summertime. So. Like I said, majority of that equipment does come to Menominee in the summer months.
Well, I'm not so worried about that, but I'm I just, I'm sure that the former highway committees have have realized that. It doesn't make much sense to run a truck from Menominee up to Sand Creek to start plowing.
Correct.
When you have your outline shops so the guys can start where they start. So thank you.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dustin, and the first first thing I noticed when you did the wash bay. Picture up here, from my experience with washing trucks and trailers, is that you'd be pretty wet by the time you got done. So also have had the experience with, you know, using. Mechanical washers or what? I don't know what's the term for it with the big brushes that whirl it down the side? Is that an option in the new shop or is the the all the cricks and crannies of a plow truck is a whole lot different than a over the road semi? I mean, is this still going to be a hand washed operation by the driver?
Yeah, so what the estimated cost is for a is for a manual wash bay. We do have an option if depending on who wants to spend more money to put an automatic wash bay in. A lot of the St. Croix, Eau Claire, all the new facilities went to the automatic style. From what I've heard, they're a maintenance nightmare. A lot of mechanical moving parts. So our intent would be just more of a manual wash bay where you can get multiple trucks in at one time.
In the under.
Supervisor Burnt.
I was actually wondering if if you've seen any sort of. Hybrid manual wash base where it would be able to more easily provide access to clean the undercarriage of.
Yeah, so the the intent would have an underbody wash, so water obviously spraying underneath the truck. Yeah, that would be what would be included with this.
Supervisor Andemulan.
Trucks arrived at their ultimate size now? Are they going to keep getting bigger? Can you buy smaller trucks?
A pretty common truck today is a quad axle, so that has the the four four tires. So we're right now at tries tri axles and smaller. Will they get bigger? Possibly. We are looking for efficiencies, so dual use. We're trying to get a lot of dual use out of our trucks. So we can plow with a tri axle and haul asphalt materials in efficiently. So I can't say if they're going to get much larger. I hope not because we can't afford what we have. I mean, the cost is. They're ridiculous. So that's all I can say on that, but. Intent would be. This building would allow for that expansion if whatever truck gets forty feet in length, we would have stalls that would accommodate that.
All right, that appears to be it for the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would invite Beata to come over and give you a run through of the rest of the capital improvement plan. Again, this evening you won't be making any decisions regarding final decisions regarding the capital improvement. Items or the funding, but that will come back to you based on your feedback tonight that will come back to you. As through the committees and the board for May. Good evening. This is going to be short, right? Dan covered it all. So I provided you hard copies of what the department has presented. For the proposed five year plan. Let's get started. So some of the CIP background, some of it is old news. The one new item is on the bottom that we implemented, which is a. New CIP policy, so that's been adapted and specific to this policy. Am I going too fast? Okay, so specific, what's new in this policy is that we set parameters and define what is a CIP eligible item. We also defined and what about the other items that maybe have a dollar threshold? So I did a snippet here, only one part of that policy. So we defined capital improvement, those items that are long term, if we're going to borrow, we want to make sure that. It, the debt, you know, the, the value of that asset doesn't depreciate faster than, you know, we still be paying for it. So we're looking at a long term cost project, so that's like putting a building that have. You know, twenty or, I'm sorry, fifty year type of a depreciation, remodeling, repairing and so on. And then we needed to cover those one time projects. Because there are some departments that are not able to. Absorb in their, in their operating budget for items that you might. Say, well, that doesn't really qualify for building, remodeling. This might be an item that they don't have any funds to cover, such as squat cars, for example. So then that's where we put in one time project. So meeting those three is, if it's greater than a hundred thousand, we would then ask, put that on as a CIP request. And for some would be, alright, well, I have a GPS system that we need to do, or maybe some other item that's below that hundred thousand. How does that qualify? Then we are looking at, is this, does this result? In an increase to the department operating budget by seven percent or more. So this will kind of give that room to those departments that have smaller budget. And then the last item is other high cost purchases. That are at the discretion of a department. So let's say we have a department veterans, they're, they're smaller. Budget wise than any other, and I always say they do big things, but. Dollar wise, it's real small budget, but if they need to make a purchase. We would then be looking at is, do they have any other funding sources for that? Would they need something other, for example, either. Fund balance or any other means, they just don't have the funds available. So with this new policy is when we met with all the management and re-reviewed all their requests, sorry, a little too fast. We considered this new policy. So there were items that were, that we removed very few, but those fell into the question. Okay, is that really, does that belong in a CIP or will that need to be brought in during our budget cycle? And our debt, which is pre-audited, so this goes back, you know, the question was, well, how much that we'll have, so this, and this is pre-audited. With our recent borrow, so that would be thirty-one million. And I also looked at our scoring because I was always curious to see. How we're going to be viewed by a independent. Rating agency when we go and we borrow. So I had a meeting with them and it was interested, you know, kind of confirm my, my theory, but I needed that. Confirmation is the way that we structured our debt. And that presentation that Dan did will have. Very minimum, minimal impact because there's a lot that goes into that methodology and how they score us. And our debt, what we have borrowed will have an impact, but because we pay down our debt. We don't foresee that part of the rating to be greatly impacted. But there's also the external environment, which is the economy, what's around us. Businesses, housing and so on. So there's a lot more that goes into that methodology. So I wanted to highlight, what, what is it that we have on our books for debt? So we have some that will, in twenty-seven, so this is where. We ask PMA to structure the debt so that gives us that opportunity not to exceed that five some million dollars. So you see that in, in two thousand seventeen. We will be done paying the original debt that we borrow seven point one, and this was for the ERP system SAP. So yeah, so at the end we'll have about. Original debt and what we actually will have remaining balance is thirty-one million, one sixty-five. Well, this is again just a graph of what, if we did not borrow anything, this is what our debt. Reduction would look like. So the opportunity that we asked PMA to look for, for future borrowing such as. Highway or anything else is be able to look to see, for example. Borrow.
And not increase your debt.
And not increasing debt service. So as you're looking at the CIP, some items to keep in mind. Is that in twenty-six, there's, you know, potential increases in wages. It's too early to say what the benefits will look like. And there's cost of living to consider. Also highway department. In addition to that, in their operating budget, they'll have about six point. Eight million dollars in county construct, road construction built in. And typically, there's always minimal increases. We try to keep it a minimal for the operating expenses. So I wanted to revisit our fund balance. So, but this is as of twenty twenty-four. So we are at twelve point seven, well, eight million, let's round it. So that brings us at that phony nine point three percent. And I, and what that is, is where our ordinance states that our fund balance should not, shall not be less than thirty-five and no greater than fifty. So it really just a little shy over that fifty percent threshold, so it is still very healthy. And now I, departments will do their own presentation.
I think you could probably just run through it. Most of it Scott, so he's not here.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to take that copy back. No, I don't have it memorized. Okay. So on the sum, the first page is a summary of what are we looking at for twenty twenty-five? The other preceding pages are just so that we're looking at five years out. Considering what they, what the need is for twenty-five, but also what would that future need be in those other departments? So we, for the sheriff for twenty twenty-five. Those are their stock squat cars and they're on their replacement schedule. As you see on the other five year plan, they replace four squat cars a year. Facilities. The first item there is the demolition. We recall back in twenty twenty-three CIP. It was proposed to demolish. The old boiler room and stack room. And at that time, the board agreed, well, let's just not go demolish it, let's just put twenty-five thousand dollars a year aside. So that, so right now there's, it happened, was approved in twenty-three and twenty-four.
And twenty-five.
And twenty-five. So right now there'd be. Seventy-five thousand dollars available for them. And if you approve twenty-six, and that would just keep adding to, to that dollar amount. So I brought that forward to see if that's still will be considered. We met with facilities too, and I just want to point out that we reviewed all their needs and there were. You know, maybe it's just, just me that asked that question, but just in case you're curious too. With the highway new facility coming and we asked, it's like, okay, well. You know, if we're building a highway new place, do any of this are needed and just wanted to revisit that. Can you move some of your stuff over to that building, all those possibilities? So what's, what you see upfront is what he really needs, and he's not here to speak to exactly some of the items that he reconsidered. But those, we definitely vetted them through to kind of ask those questions, even for me to understand. Is that extra, you still need to do remodel roof if this is a bigger facility and can that be repurposed and. You know, again, like the sheriff will have opportunity to put his vehicles in. To repurpose the existing and, you know, I was just throwing out ideas out there, but I just want you to know that we. That was considered in all those discussions before Scott made that decision, what is it that he really needs? So as you see, his is repairs. And then so that falls under that category, under that CIP, rebuilding, remodeling and so on. And he has a John Deere tractor. And we identify that per the policy as a one time item. He just does not have the fund to absorb it in his operating budget. And then the highway, of course, again, this is repetition here. That's what Dan covered, what would that engineering cost be to do the. New facility. And then we have last item, which is information technology. So there is also unfunded item and that's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And Dan is here that he can speak to that, a purchase item. But it's the excess network switches replacements, right? That's all I know. So any questions? I'll do my best. I've learned a lot through that process too, every year.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nice presentation. In looking at the thirty, or the thirty-one million where we're at now, right? Debt plus. Is that the figure?
Wrong keyboard.
Thirty-one, one sixty-five?
That we levied, the three million is on here that we levied in twenty-five.
Okay, well, I guess I'm not really that concerned about, I am concerned about the dollar amount, of course, but. Do you have any comments about how that number might have changed over the years? If we, how the COVID money would have saved, would have been in there or. Other federal payouts for the, the different things that has come?
Yeah, COVID did help. As you recall, we did not issue any debt in twenty twenty-four. We use ARPA funds to pay for some of the equipment and we did it for some other items that were on a CIP. I don't have it in front of me, but a lot, all of it was CIP funded in twenty twenty-four that we had on the list.
And wasn't there also for the.
Settlements.
Opioid?
Yeah, opioid settlements, so this funding has a specific purpose. So this funding is designated for, and you know, we have DHS here that can speak more to that program. But we cannot spend it at, say, buying squat cars. It has a specific purpose. For opioid treatments, treatment court can use that money. The sheriff department can use that money for services. I know that that opioid fund comes with some level of restrictions, what we can spend it on, but I know for sure we cannot buy, it has to be opioid related.
So. With not having. The COVID funds. Spent.
The COVID, the COVID ARPA money is spent, it's all, it's all accounted for.
What would that, would that have increased our debt today?
If we didn't have it, yes, yes, that would.
Just about how much? Because I'm, I'm trying to develop a crystal ball, but I'm not, I can't even tell you when it's going to rain.
Right, so.
It, it seems to me that federal monies might be hard to get in the future.
Oh, it is. Oh, it is. We definitely can assure you that the ARPA money was wisely spent and we made sure. Every penny was accounted for, so we don't run into a risk then, you know, auditing and saying, hey, you need to put.
About eight million?
Yes, and we used it for, we used that funding in four years period. And we didn't borrow in twenty twenty-four, and we also applied that ARPA money for other things outside the CIP.
Right, and I'm not going to complain because it got really nice fans down at the.
Right, right, so, so if there was no COVID money, to answer your question. Yes, we could have borrowed three million dollars in addition to what we have now, or depending on what that need was, but right now, we're keep. Keeping it at a three million dollars, but of course Dustin here has six point eight million in projects. So that's, it helps to cover that cost because there's, you know, some levy in there, but we can talk more when the budget comes.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And is there more slides?
I was just gonna, no, I was just gonna join you here to say, so we, like we said, we're not going to make decisions, you're not going to make decisions tonight about. The projects approved or the funding. The one thing that I would say, and we've had this conversation a number of times internally, as soon as we, okay. So I'm gonna look at Mike if he's still back there. When Mike starts paying us for that solar project. We are moving those squad cars to an operating cost because we'll have a funding source, so as soon as we have a funding source to do that. We'd love to get those off of the capital improvement fund because they really are an operating expense. They exceed. You don't want to borrow from because they exceed, the borrowing would exceed the lifetime of a squad car. So we recognize that and, and we'll love to get that problem, project fixed, problem fixed. But on the flip side of it. Because Biata, Dan, Dustin. And others have worked really, really hard over the last two years to really stabilize the highway department's funding. Picture. They, Dustin has money set aside in fund balance that could be used to cover the engineering and design costs. Again, one time money, it will draw down his fund balance, but it is an opportunity for funding of that. With money that's already been set aside. And on the other side of the equation, because as you saw, as Biata showed you, we were still with a healthy fund balance. Of our general fund, we also believe that we could cover the other half, roughly other half. Of the CIP with use of fund balance if that's how you chose to do that. So it wouldn't result in any borrowing, and we would just be paying down out of two funds, but. Would be able to cover what are pretty nominal CIP costs for this year.
And this is just the general fund, this, this does not include Dustin's highway.
Supervisor Burnt. So what I'm hearing is we're, we're in a pretty good spot.
Yes, yes. I'm comfortable.
Supervisor Barrier.
I just need a reminder, the demolition of the old. Boiler room and stacks, we're putting away twenty-five thousand dollars, and. When are we going to be doing that? Like, is there a target amount of money that we're aiming for?
I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay.
So, yes. Was it two hundred fifty or two hundred seventy?
Okay, thank you.
And again. Scott isn't here to defend himself. But it's money that was to, put it aside, but I don't, I don't. Think there was a discussion to say, it needs to happen. I don't know.
It could change.
It could change is what I meant, yeah.
You could choose to change it.
Yeah, you, you absolutely, that's what I was trying to say without throwing Scott under the bus.
Alright. I'm not seeing any further questions. Chris, you don't have anything else beyond this for the review?
And I just want to remind the next steps, oops. So today is the sixteenth, so on May fourteenth. The executive committee will get to review that and kind of will formulate their recommendation for the CIP funding. And on May twenty-first, and we'll come back to you. Ask to adapt the budget that will be recommended by the executive committee.
Or tell us we're. Off and change the numbers.
This gives you some time to think and think it through and prepare.
Okay, folks.
Thank you.
We are agended so that we can roll right in, but I'm guessing everyone would like ten or fifteen minutes of downtime between meetings. So I'm going to adjourn the CIP workshop, and then I will call the board back to order at five two.
And just a reminder that Mike Ross knows here, if you wish to speak to him about the solar project.
And with that, we are adjourned. All right, if folks want to start drifting back to their chairs.
Five two was so we would get started by seven.
Okay, folks, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk will call the roll?
Supervisor Lauffer is present. Supervisor Breslin is present. Supervisor Headland is here. Supervisor Score is here. Supervisor Steen is present. Supervisor Shackleton is present. Supervisor Gary Bjork is here. Supervisor Wilson is here. Supervisor Quinn is here. Supervisor Jetson is here. Supervisor Bashan is here. Supervisor Kneer is here. Supervisor Barrier is here. Supervisor Lyon is here. Supervisor Vogel is here. Supervisor Story is, yep. Supervisor Vandermeulen is still here. Supervisor Burnt is here. Supervisor Morehouse is here. Supervisor Hagan is present. Supervisor Thomas, President Supervisor Prochnow is here. Supervisor Gilbert is joining us online. Supervisor Larry Bjork is here. Supervisor Bauer is here. Supervisor Wolf is present. Supervisor Hartong is here and Chair McCullough.
Yep. Approval of the minutes is the next item. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Bashan seconds. Any speaking to the minutes?
I have one. Supervisor Bashan astutely pointed out that under Resolution Number 16, support to obtain family-friendly workplace certification, the next line should not read the 2025 Wisconsin County Clerk Conference.
That is absolutely correct.
Must have been multitasking, so we will strike that part out from the minutes.
All right. A vote to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Presentation of petitions, memorials and other communications? Yep. Recognition of retiring municipal clerks. Andrew, you're, you're up.
So many of you have heard me before say that being your county clerk is one of the greatest honors I've ever had in my life. And I'm only as successful because of the 30 municipal clerks that I get to work with every day. They represent each one of the municipalities in our great county. And so I wanted to do something, come up over here, to recognize their retirement. So we'll start with Karen. Karen Meyer is retiring from the town of Colfax. Karen started seven years ago with the town of Colfax and has seen some really wonderful advancements in their processes and procedures and has really done an amazing job. So honoring the last seven years of her work, I'd like to present this plaque to Karen Meyer for her great service. In addition, Carolyn Leclerc has represented the town of Elk Mound as their elected clerk for over 16 years. Carolyn and Karen also are sisters-in-law. And as you might know, clerks run very closely together. Carolyn has seen some great advancements in the town of Elk Mound over the years, starting just after the economic crisis that happened 16 years ago and really was able to make sure that the town of Elk Mound stayed on track to make sure that we are where we are today because of that. So in honoring her 16 years of service to the town of Elk Mound, I'd like to present this plaque to Carolyn Leclerc. And finally, Pat Pickering from the town of Weston. Pat Pickering has been an institution in the town of Weston. Pat Pickering has been the elected clerk from the town of Weston for over 30 years. She is the second longest-serving clerk in Dunn County. We've seen a lot of advancements since Pat started in 1995. I believe it was paper ballots, right, and hand counting everything in 1995. She's also, I did some quick math, in the 30 years that Pat has been a municipal clerk, there have been 72 different pieces of legislation that have passed to change election rules and regulations. It's been a lot to keep up with over the years, so I wanted to thank Carolyn, or I wanted to thank Pat for her 30 years of experience and tenure with the town of Weston.
Thank you so much. Alright. Next up, public comment. I don't have anything, but Mike. Yeah, you gotta talk into the microphone for the online audience.
Hi, my name is Mike. Thanks for having me here today, and the people on the internet, thank you for joining your fellow community members. I just wanted to say hi. I'm with National Grid Renewables. If you have any questions about what's gonna happen with our permitting process and what we're gonna do in the town of Springbrook, please feel free to reach out to me. Everyone up here has my email address and my phone number. If you need it, I can give it to you. I'm not gonna do it online, because I don't know the people that are watching. But if you need anything from me, please let me know. I am down to answer any questions, and I think over the next month, we're gonna go for the JDA. So any questions during that time too, I'm open and willing to talk to anyone about literally anything. Well, it's product-related, not anything in general, but product-related, I'm your guy. So again, thanks for meeting a lot of you guys right over in the house. Look forward to talking to you more often, so thanks.
Alright, thank you. I don't have any further? Nope. Alright, closing public comment on to appointments. You have a set of appointments in front of you. We can either do them as a group, or if you would like to pull out the supervisor appointment for separate, that would be fine. Supervisor Steen.
I move we approve them all.
Alright, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Supervisor Burnt seconds. Alright, now speaking to Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Our new county board supervisor for 14?
Yes, 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 you could. Agnes, without objection, come on up and give us all the brief introduction. Oh my God. This is my fourth meeting. I'm a little bit...
Hello. My name is Agnes Welsh, and I am honored to become a Dunn County Supervisor. I was born and raised in southwest Minnesota on a farm. I graduated from Worthington High School there. I went to the University of Minnesota, graduated in 1972 with a bachelor's degree in nursing, and in 1986 with a master's degree in public health. I am a veteran. I was in the Army Nurse Corps from 1972 to 1974. I have been in nursing 40 years or thereabouts, and I finished my career as a nurse educator at what was then known as WITC in New Richmond, in the Associate Secrety Nursing Program there, and that's where I retired from a while back. That's it, pretty much. Do you have any questions?
It does not look like it. Alright, so we have the motion on the floor. Thank you very much. Yeah. We are ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, you are in. We will get you sworn in right now, and you can start voting momentarily.
Agnes Welsh, firm that I will support.
A firm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of county supervisor.
Of the office of county supervisor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do so swear.
I do so swear. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Alright, that's appointments. Report to the county manager, Chris.
Alright, you have purchased orders over $40,000 in your packets. Any questions about those? If not, moving along, you also were provided with this handout from Heather. I would say that I had never heard of property fraud, and just like three days before Heather talked about this, I listened to a podcast on Planet Money about these poor people in New York who had their place taken illegally, and somebody built an $800,000 home on it, believing they were building it on the property that it purchased, and it was only because a former neighbor called them and said, "Why are you building this house on your property?" that they were like, "Oh, we're not," and it was a whole long ta-da. So this is real. It's interesting. Okay, ERP update. So we're moving along. We actually have a go-live date for the finance piece of the ERP. It will be less than a year from now, in March of 2026, and so we're excited about that. Similarly, we've been working with SAP, our current provider, to see if we can go live, if they will help to coordinate for us to go live with our timekeeping system, time and attendance system ahead of time, and it looks like that's gonna be a go, right? Am I fair in saying that? Yep, that looks like Jake from IT has been working closely with them, and it looks like that's gonna be a go. They've done an integration with, between the company that we're moving to, and SAP have done a number of integrations in the past, so they were not daunted by us asking them to help to do that in this particular project, which will make the go-live process for the entire system much, much more, much, much easier, as all of the timekeeping and payroll stuff will all have been accomplished ahead of time. And then last month, you agreed to seeking a designation as a family-friendly workplace, and Jenna asked that I report to you that, given the package of benefits and policies and things that we have available to us in the county, we were able to achieve the gold certification for that, which means I believe we're in the top 10%? Top tier. Okay, so the tier is 94%, no, the top tier of employers in western Wisconsin, and so that's cool. That's something that we can certainly market. And there seems like there was something else. Oh, did they get rules of the board?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure before I said that. Alright, so you received rules of the board. Those have, we have been in review. We did it in two parts through the, through two executive committee meetings. So if you wish to have a little bit deeper dive of information, you can go back to this month and last month's executive committee meetings, and you can hear the discussion, you can hear Jim, Jim's presentation, talking through those proposed changes. Again, they are a compilation of, Wisconsin Counties Association created a model rules template that they would say would be the best practices. We took that and married that to our existing rules of the board ordinance, and some updates that we needed to or wanted to make with regard to those, or that were suggested to be made with regard to those, the current ordinance. So what you have is a smash-up of all of those different pieces of information. Again, first two months, last month, we did Sections 1 and 2. This last month, this month, we did Sections 3 and 4. Next month, in May, on May 14th, the executive committee will review the final draft of that. Again, it's not final-final until it's all approved, but if, so if you have strong thoughts about some portion of that, something that you want to see addressed in that, please reach out to the executive committee, someone on the executive committee, and also if you see something that you really believe should not be a part of the final rule, or you want it to change, and you're gonna offer an amendment to that as we bring it forward in May for final board approval, connect with Jim ahead of time, and he'll help you write the language for whatever it is that you would like to have, because we'd like to be able to provide that to people ahead of time in writing, just because, like a lot of other things in government, once we do these, probably no one's gonna do anything significant with them for about another 74 years. And so we want to make sure that they're as complete as to what people want them to be when they're approved next month. So again, if you have some language that you'd like to see, something changed, reach out to Jim, and he can help you with that. Anything else with regard to those things? Any questions with those? Alright, lastly, I'm gonna invite Dan to come back up and speak with you about, so some of you that have been in judiciary in law and in, oh, what else do we do? Um, CRNT, have heard presentations from Garrett Zestopol from Extension, and/or Tony Christopherson from the Town of Elkmount, and Dan is kind of gonna compilation. We think it's time for the entire board to hear some of the discussion that's happening around fire and EMS, because ultimately it may come forward at some point in time to require some board action. So Dan's gonna do a presentation for you based on a compilation of the information that's been shared in some other venues.
And just one brief introduction, Agnes, you'll be on judiciary in law, at least initially. We, we may do some shuffling around at some point, but talk with Supervisor Wilson, who is your chair, about what's coming up?
Alright, so yeah, so some of you, this is repeat information, but something that we wanted to make sure that everybody had a level of understanding that this is, these are conversations that are happening, and it's something that we do expect will make their way back to the board. So just give you a little step into that, to that right now, so that you're informed, or you know to kind of keep your ear to the ground as, as things are happening over the next few months or years. So, starting off, so firing EMS in Wisconsin, so this is, I think, something as you look at that, and we, I think in a lot of cases, people think of them as the same thing, and in some cases they are, but they are statutorily two kind of separate items in, in how they are handled. So as we talk about EMS, we're talking about ambulance response, and as we talk about fire, obviously that is fire response. So you can see right here, there's some numbers down on the bottom where you see there's about 1 million ambulance runs annually. These are Wisconsin statistics, as opposed to 18,000 fire incidents. So ambulance is definitely a much larger portion of those calls that are happening throughout time. So ambulance service and fire service are both, then are the responsibilities of the municipalities, the towns, the villages, the cities. So this is the statutes as it relates to Wisconsin towns. If you don't spend way too much time reading statutes like Jim, Chris, and I, the word shall is must. So most of these statutes, whenever you see the word shall, it means that you must. So the town board shall contract for or operate and maintain ambulance services unless such services are provided by another person. And you can see the shall for, for fire protection. So what that means is towns are required to contract for these services for the citizens. Obviously, we're all citizens in one of these, and we appreciate that, and likely agree with it. But that does kind of put them in that, that mandate category that we talk a lot about. As you talk about cities and villages, so there's different laws that, that cover each of these. You do see that there's mays that, that show up in those areas, but in the end, the cities and villages are also required to provide that. They have a little bit more flexibility in how they go about doing that, but it is a, still a requirement of something for them to pay. Does allow them to kind of operate things a little differently. So the next component, and you'll, you may or may not be familiar with this, this is something that just happened a couple of years ago. As we talked about the increase in state funding that happened to both counties and municipalities, along with that came the maintenance of effort requirements for police and emergency services. The short version of that, you can kind of read through the bullets if you'd like, but the short version of that is municipalities and counties can't cut the amount of funding that had been provided to those services. So you need to demonstrate that you're providing the same level of effort year in and year out for those services. So the state gave additional funds, but they essentially said, "Don't cut these areas." So another kind of close, as you, as you get back into that mandate, so you look at the level that these towns are at, they can't decrease that in order to, to manage those, those costs. This is a map. I didn't print this one out for you, so you're gonna have to get the binoculars out again, specializing in binocular slides today. So this is the map of the ambulance providers in Dunn County currently. So you can see the different colors. You can see we have two career ambulance departments, and that's the Menominee Fire Department and the Eau Claire Fire Department. So each of these municipalities is contracting with these different services to cover all or a portion of their municipality. These are the lines that they have drawn through those contracts. Then we have seven volunteer ambulance departments in the county. That's Glenwood, Elmwood, Boyceville, Dallas, Durand. And then we have an advanced EMT in Colfax. So I will point out, obviously, you can see some of those municipalities, or some of those services are from outside of Dunn County, but they're serving some of those areas around the edges of Dunn County. And finally, you have the Emergency Medical Responders Group, called the Dunn County First Responders. So down at the bottom, you see a table there that kind of breaks down the different types of responders there. So you can see paramedics with CCE, don't ask me what that is, but they are required to do 700 hours of training with 72 hours annual upkeep. And as you go down to the other end of that, you get Emergency Medical Response, 49 hours of one-time training, and 16 hours of biannual training. So there's different levels of service that each of those people can provide. And along with those levels of service, as you may assume, there's a different cost associated with people, depending on the amount of education they have in those fields, and the services that they can provide. Your paramedics can apply drugs, and they can give you an IV, where the emergency medical responders are covering wounds, maybe doing CPR, some sort of basic things that can keep somebody in a certain state until more, more help can come. So more of that very much very first responder. I assume that many law enforcement officers are trained in those same EMR. I'm looking at one to, just to get some confirmation. So. Moving along here, these are the fire departments that cover Dunn County, so that those lines are not necessarily the same. Fire districts are different than, than the ambulance response areas that you can see. See a list of all of the fire departments. Menominee is the only career, it's a combination career and volunteer fire department. The rest of them are all volunteer. Colfax does have, I believe, some, well, it's primarily volunteer, I was gonna say. I know they have some paid people as well. And this is my wow statistic. I shouldn't say my wow statistic. It's got the University of Wisconsin logo. This is borrowed from UTV Extension. But 41%, so EMS has some reliability issues. So 41% of the ambulance services or, or people have reported that they have not been able to staff 24 by 7 by 365 in the past 12 months. So that's one of the requirements of these services, to be able to provide those services at that level. And as you look into kind of a further breakdown of that, as you may have expected, in your rural areas with volunteer departments, that's where the, the majority of that lack of response is, and, and that really is emblematic of Dunn County, as well as we saw in the previous statistics. So some trends, staffing. So lack of volunteers is the one that... So lack of volunteers is the one I think to really call out there, and that is something that I think we've seen in a lot of social organizations, but that's also falling into the fire department and emergency response world, that less people are choosing to volunteer to be a part of their local fire service. And that is leading to those decreased staff times or the need to shut down those and to end up contracting with a full-time fire department. Contracting with a full-time fire department is going to cost you more than using a volunteer one. So you can see the increases in personnel costs, kind of falls into that same category as, as salaries are going up, but as that, as that demand is increased, the, the cost is going to go up. We do have, this statistic is some statewide stuff, so difficult access and training centers, that's not a problem that we necessarily have in Dunn County. A CVTC in Eau Claire does have those, those services provided for us. And then the cost of capital expenses, the cost to replace a fire truck. And so many of the fire trucks that are out there are 30 and 40 years old, and the replacement of them is in the six, seven, $800,000 world. So just extremely large costs, especially as you look at some of these smaller municipalities and how, what portion of their total tax levy that is, or, or how much they would have to borrow. So speaking of that, so these are some costs from the, from the Town of Elk Mound. So you can see from 2006 to 2024, their ambulance service previously costs about $10,000 and it now costs $78,000. So at that point, it'd account for about 5% of their levy and is now 28% of their levy. So a $68,000 increase in, got these, got these numbers from the, from the Chair of the Town of Elk Mound, you want to point out right here. So we talk about the increase in state aid that had happened a couple of years ago. So the increase that, of state aid that the Town of Elk Mound received was $61,974. The increase, sorry, did I, did I, I thought I did, what? The cost that they have, that cost increase was 68,000. So that increase in aid didn't even make up for the cost increase that they had in just their ambulance services alone. So then you throw in their fire and that puts them about 12,000, still less than they would have been as you throw in that additional aid. So part of that is that state aid went in along with that maintenance of effort, but it didn't actually pay enough money to solve that problem and that problem continues to, to evolve. So you can see the fire expenses as well, which they maintain a little bit more stable because of the number of calls and, and the ability to manage that with a volunteer service. So cost comparison, you can kind of look through the, the mil rates of some of these different areas for their fire service. And then the ambulance costs are, are actually configured at a, at a per capita. So what they'll do is a, obviously ambulances are responding to people, fires are responding to buildings, so, so we're going to look at those in different ways. So they will actually take the population of a township in order to figure out the cost to do that. So these are where these numbers come in. And you can see the wide range of costs that you see throughout the county, and that has a lot to do with the service that they're providing and where that is. So, and whether they're full-time or volunteer, and a lot of that is, is kind of risk-based, so. All right. So what is happening now? The Dunn County Chaplain of the Wisconsin Towns Association had put together a, I guess, or voted on a resolution to kind of go forward with a study to look at what they can do about emergency response in Dunn County. Out of that, the Town of Elk Mound, which is why you saw the Elk Mound numbers, applied for a planning grant through the State of Wisconsin, Innovation Planning Grant. They did receive that grant and that grant was to do a study for, for EMS. They have contracted with the company and that study is currently underway. I was just talking with Melissa a little bit ago, she's getting them some information. They're hoping to gather all of that information by mid-May. So kind of moving forward, getting that, that plan all together. So that's currently where we are in, in really just getting a study to say, how can we go about doing this in a better way? Because a lot of the towns are, are struggling with this particular problem. So how's the county involved? Because I already told you that this was a town municipality thing, right? So what we've been doing is just trying to get, keep people connected. So through the Towns Association meetings, got a, got a few people together in order to figure out how we could go about getting a plan. So just providing them some additional support. We did kind of tag in UW Extension, who I need to give them credit again, 90% of these slides came straight from UW Extension, I just doctored them a little bit, has been helping Tony Christopherson in, in the Town of Elk Mound kind of get some stuff together in order to do this. And then we've been presenting to county committees, so that's why I'm here. And as was mentioned, we've presented to the CRNT Committee and the Judiciary and Law. And this particular topic is something, as things change, we'll be kind of living in that Judiciary and Law Committee. So as you see things coming up, or if you want to keep up to date about what's going on, kind of watch those agendas and those meetings if you want to learn more. And there are many likely, many, many of the likely recommendations from the study are going to, in some way, shape or form, involve the county. So that's kind of why we want to have this out in front of you, to know that this could be coming at some point, and this is where that is coming from. And here's the reason why. The levy limits that we talk so much about, towns, municipalities in general, levy limits apply to emergency management services. In counties, they do not apply, the levy limits do not apply. So essentially, there is not a cap on how much a county can levy for emergency services. So that's part of the reason as towns are looking at the county to be able to do that and likely where we could see some recommendations coming in. All right. This is just a map of the State of Wisconsin. As I mentioned, a lot of that data was State of Wisconsin data. This is not a Dunn County problem, this is a state and nationwide problem. A lot of that stems from the volunteerism and just the costs of, of employees and, and how this is all managed. So you can see the different counties here and what they have gone through. It tells you that the company that is doing the study for Dunn County, it did a study for Bayfield County. So you might want to keep an eye on, on that one. And so that is the county providing grants to EMS agencies. The other areas here is a county-operated service, so the county procured all of the services to be able to do that and essentially is running an ambulance service. Then you have other counties like Taylor and Lincoln County that are a county contracted service. So the county is contracting with multiple providers. Oh, is my time up? So the county is contracting with different service providers within the county to be able to provide that. So really just kind of being that, that center point of, of where everything is done. County operated for towns, and then you have some piloting countywide, and then you see planning for county levy, which is a lot of them, including Eau Claire and Chippewa, county are planning to, to move some sort of a county levy towards EMS services, so. That's what I have. Are there any questions that, that you have? And like I say, just trying to let you know, this is something that's going to be coming.
Supervisor Burton?
That's very clear that this is becoming a problem, if it already isn't a major problem already. I think coming from, from Door County and having that centralized service, I think it's, it's important that it, to me at least, that it does come from your county instead of relying on, on other EMS services to maybe respond to calls, as Garrett had presented at CRNT. And I've been thinking, it is a lot for one county to kind of take on that. But I don't know, if, if you know it, the, the likelihood of maybe even exploring a regional centralization of, of working with other counties to, to sort of participate together in, in providing those services.
Yeah. Certainly things we can look at, like I said, right now, we're waiting for a report that, that is going to be from, from a company that does a lot of this, that'll say, hey, this is kind of the best way, or this is the, the way that counties like your county with these sorts of issues have been able to do that. But I think it completely makes sense as we, as we look at the two neighboring counties that are kind of going through this as well, find ways that we can share, share as much as possible.
Do you want to share about, they say their levies, what's compromised and what's?
Yeah. Yes, and that's, yeah, so I, I come back to this slide right here. So when you look at the, the Town of Elk Mound, if you, I mean, if you want to do the, the math, so you're looking at 28% of their levy is, is spent on ambulance. So that's 70,000 times four is, you just got to do that math, 280, $280,000 of levy, right? So that's how much money they have to play with in a year in order to manage their services, including repairing their roads and their bridges and, and other components. So as you look at an increase from 5% to 28% of their levy, there's not many places they can take it from. They are not repairing their roads because of that. I think Tony had said he's on a 70 to 80-year lifecycle. So, and you've heard about that, as we talk about that from the highway standpoint, where we're trying to get down to 30, and that's long. So, so those are kind of the compromises and, and really where those towns, where, where you say, you know, it's a problem, it's been a problem because they've been compromising for a few years now in order to, to manage that.
That looks like it.
All right.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Chris, you don't have anything else, right? All right. Reports of Departments, Register of Deeds. Heather, come on up.
Hi, I'm Heather Kuhn, the Register of Deeds. I will give you a brief overview of the written report found in your packet, and then I have a video to share about one of the hot topics in the real estate industry fraud. That's why you see these brochures on your, at your stations. The Register of Deeds is legally responsible for the permanent preservation and maintenance of land and vital records. We take a proactive role in safeguarding these records, ensuring their availability. We file marriage and death records within a statewide database, and from that same system or database, we are able to offer statewide issuance for all vital records, including birth, marriage, death and divorce certificates. There are some limitations available, on availability based on dates. All land record information originates from the real estate recordings conducted in our office. We recorded 5,353 documents in 2024 and 1,545 of those documents were on ownership transfers. Documents that are submitted to our office must be entered on the day received and in the order received. The majority of revenue we collect comes from document recording fees, transfer fees and online access. Fees are set by state statute and the housing market and economy impact those revenues as well. Customer service is a big part of our day, answering phone calls, emails and walk-ins. In addition to copy requests, we respond to a wide variety of questions pertaining to estate planning, ownership rights, easements, mapping and taxable related questions, and where to find forms, and even sentry farm applications. You can always come into the office to research, but you can access records remotely in one of two ways. One search, one search platform requires a monthly subscription. We currently have 24 remote subscribers, which are mainly title companies, attorneys, lenders, appraisers and surveyors. And the other platform is mainly used for a quick, simple search and requires a credit card payment. I appreciated that 2024 brought lots of opportunities for staff development and training. Even as a small office, we were, staff were, were able to participate in the employee relations work group and the ERP selection process. We spent a lot of time training a new part-time employee, but ended the year with a vacant position. So as I mentioned, one of the hot topics in the real estate industry is fraud. Fraudsters are attempting to steal your identity and your property for financial gain. In some circumstances, they don't necessarily even want the property, they want the cash from a quick sale, and then they are long gone, leaving a legal mess to untangle in court. Vacant property or vacation homes, property that may not be monitored all that often, could potentially make for an easier target. I shared a link in my written report that featured an ABC News report where the FBI had warned property owners to be on alert for scams. Not sure if you had a chance to watch that video, but I, I thought I would share a different news clip where the Brown County Register of Deeds in Green Bay was interviewed along with their mutual software vendor, Fiddler Technologies.
Real estate fraud, that's on the rise.
Realtors and title companies are on high alert and you should be too. And a consumer first alert, Tammy Elliott, explains how the scam works and what you can do right now to protect yourself.
The FBI put out an alert saying this new type of real estate fraud is up over 500% over the last few years. Scammers pose as the owner and sell property they don't own. ABC News shared the scam warning on GMA. You've likely seen the alleged plot to steal Elvis Presley's Graceland estate. Officials calling attention to this troubling trend where someone forges documents, notary credentials with the goal to steal someone's home or land. A property owner in northeast Wisconsin reached out to me after getting an unsettling number of letters from across the country with offers to buy her land.
So that's, that's what's concerning because what's to stop them from, you know, filing a deed that I sold the property to them when I didn't?
People are posing as sellers and selling these people's properties and unsuspecting buyers are buying it and putting buildings up on it.
I can tell you that in the last two years, the amount of losses that homeowners have incurred has doubled.
The Brown County Register of Deeds tells me that a property fraud alert is your first line of defense. Here's the website, propertyfraudalert.com. You can sign up for free to have your name monitored to track possible fraudulent recordings that affect your property. This does not prevent fraud from happening, but it provides an early warning.
They will receive a notification within 24 hours. And that's tremendously important because if they find out a year or two or longer down the road, to untangle that mess is, is a nightmare.
Property fraud alert, knowing that it happened right away is the key.
So contact your county where you live or own property to find out more. And scammers often target vacant land or properties that are free of liens or mortgages, pieces of land where people aren't checking on regularly or don't live near. And if you're a buyer and it sounds too good to be true and the seller won't meet in person, definitely ask questions. Tammy Elliott, Action Two News.
So I have been, I was made aware of two attempts in Dunn County where a scammer impersonated a property, property owner in an attempt to sell property. And one was for a property on Lake Tener, and the scammer contacted a local Realtor and was not able to pronounce Menominee. So that threw up a red flag for the Realtor, and thankfully, the Realtor did further investigation, contacted the rightful owner who lives outside of the county, and they had no intention of selling. And the other was for a property on Lake Minhamon, and again, not owner occupied. This time, the Realtor made it as far as putting a sign in the yard, and the neighbor contacted the rightful owner and they were not planning on selling. And so both of these owners, property owners, reached out to our office and we signed them up for property fraud alert. Again, it's a free notification, similar to what you see at Brown County, we have the same system. You can sign up with your name. It doesn't, again, it doesn't prevent fraud, but it will, you know, provide you with that early notification within 24 hours if there's a document recorded in our office and indexed with your name. So you can call our office, you can sign up online, you can stop by, we can help you get signed up. up. Currently, we have 373 subscribers at last count. So I also just wanted to send a quick shout out to the deputy registers, Annette and Lori in my office. There's, I'm so very thankful to work with them. I'm thankful for the work they do and for their knowledge and expertise. And with that, stop by our office anytime. You can sign up for property fraud alerts. I appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heather, your report always is a highlight of the year for me because those three people seem to get the work done every year, no matter what. But the question I have is, I don't think I've been up to the new upstairs, but I remember the the previous building on Wilson Street, your office seemed to be almost like a vault. And I wondered if that's the situation now, or if all those computers, cloud stuff, or are you still a vault?
We are no longer a vault. And truly, I guess, the downtown office had a vault door, but it really wasn't a vault per se. I remember that door very clearly because one morning I came in to open the office, and the linkage was messed up on the that vault door, and I we couldn't get in, and they had to cut a hole in the window to get into the office. So that brings back memories.
I thought there was a newspaper article where you crawl through the hole.
Yeah, should have played that video. But our records are, so we still have the paper records, but our records are backed up, stored, you know, offsite, secondary location. We we pay for that service, but yeah, we do have the records backed up, so.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the good work.
Thank you.
That looks like it. Thank you, Heather. Veteran Services, Greg.
Good evening, County Board Chair, County Board Supervisors. This evening, I'll give a quick report overview of 2024 for the Veterans Office. We report to the Health and Human Services Committee. There's a members and their vision statement. I'll start off talking about the federal benefits and how those benefits impact Dunn County and how they they save money, benefit our local veterans and their dependents. The federal VAs broke down into three departments. They have the Veterans Benefits Administration, the Veterans Health Administration, and then the Cemetery Association. Just roughly this last reporting period, which there's been a significant increase in veterans using the veterans' health care, and I think the costs, as well as expansion of benefits, have seen that increase in locally. We have seen an increase in in veterans, and you'll see as I go farther in the report, and we talk about money that has been spent, there has been a significant increase in money that's been spent for the care of our of our veterans. The National Cemeteries Association, or the that part of the Veterans Administration, there's no no greater responsibility that anyone that works with veterans and dependents than offering up that dignity and respect, that end of life planning, and ensuring that that we honor them at the end, we honor that that family, the mourning mourning process, and try to make make things a little bit easier for them going through that process. So all they have to do is worry about the the mourning, the mourning part of that. And so you can, you can see, we have a quite a few burial benefits that we process each year. This last year, I believe, was around 50, 58, but roughly, we range anywhere from 50 to 100 on that. The next benefit area we're talking about is the the state of Wisconsin. So we interact a lot with the state of Wisconsin as well as we do with the federal side. The state state level, they've improved some of their technology, and I think as as things progress, I think we're gonna, we're gonna probably, we're in a pretty rapid paced improvement and and efficiencies with a lot of the technology that's moving. And and the state of Wisconsin has updated some outdated systems, which which helps us do our job better, helps veterans and dependents receive benefits a lot quicker. Two of those benefits that I'll highlight is the Wisconsin property tax credit. You have to be 100% permanently and totally disabled according to the VA, and those are from injuries sustained while you you're working with the Department of Defense and in one of the branches of the of the military. And then you you receive a credit back after you file your Wisconsin property taxes, your property and one acre. So if you have, of course, you have 100 acres, the Department of Revenue with the state figures out that what that calculation is. You pay it, you request that credit credit back. The Wisconsin GI Bill, that is a benefit that is offered to veterans as well as dependents, that they can receive 128 credits from any of the state schools within Wisconsin. And we have a lot of lot of usage of that great, great program. And again, it's a it's a benefit to attract veterans that are bringing high skills back to our our area, as well as honoring and helping those dependents get well trained, and we can get them out into the into workforce. Locally, one thing that I'd like to highlight locally is really our our collaborative partnership with human services, every program with our our local human services, as well as Project Hope. There has been an immense amount of referrals back and forth. What that does is that reduces the confusion for people that are looking for assistance. It helps deal with crisis when you're you're accessing behavioral health, crisis behavioral health services, keeps everybody from each of the the local PDs working together and ensure that we can get somebody the help they need, cut down on costs, as well as making sure that that long term support, either adult protective services, all the way through any type of social security disability and any of those those benefits. Looking at the the budget, as you look at our budget, I'm going to brief by exception on this. It shows that we have available money remaining. That is incorrect. We're still waiting for some of the the updates. We worked with with finance. So there is no money remaining in the WDVA grant, but there will be a little bit left over in the operations, which is the top top one, because we shifted some salary salary costs. But overall, healthy budget, we did not over overspend, but just wanted to to point point that out. And we did have a carry forward that the board has already approved for this coming into 2025. Talk about the money that 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 comes in and the and the efforts and the really the the positive outcomes with real money that can come in for our local local veterans. And two things I'd like to highlight is, and I'd already talked about the the medical care, the increase there, you'll see from 2023 to 2024, an increase of roughly a little over $4,000, or $4 million. And we look at the unique patients, so that identifies as an increase in enrollment. So the more more veterans that we get enrolled in the receiving care through the VA, that potentially reduces any burden or any additional costs on some of our our other health healthcare programs or funded programs such as such as Medicaid. On the on the right right side, identifies and highlights some of those app, those approvals and those applications for the Department of Revenue Property Tax GI Bill. And overall noteworthy items, we have a medical equipment loan program. It it's not a mandated service, but I would argue that that touches a lot of individuals. It it's it's free, free marketing, free outreach. People come to us. So then we're able to identify if they're veterans, we're able to talk to them. And then if it's a family member, or it just sparks up that conversation. It's a great, great program. You can see an increase. And even the local local hospitals and stuffs are well well aware of it. They have some for profit rental programs, but they will still refer individuals to our office for that. The bottom number, retroactive disability or pension payments. This is real money that has gone into bank accounts for Dunn County residents. It's not a, it's not a nationally reported number. This is a number that when we process a claim for for benefits, that money comes in. We're aware of what comes in through reports of the veterans, because we go through each claim. And so this is real money that's being spent in the county, buying buying goods and services, and and honestly, helping people remain stable in their in their homes. The last, there's a number of pages here. I'm going to highlight number five with the impact statements. I provide impact statements throughout the year just to identify and and more humanize what happens. So you can you can put a potential face to what what's being done. And this one isn't necessarily a a a highlight, but a more of a of an educational thing of the fraud that exists. And and Heather had already identified some of the efforts made to to fraud people out of property. There's a lot, individuals sometimes become lonely. They will make decisions while they're searching the internet to find companionship, make friends. And there's easy ways to exchange money, and this happened to this this particular individual. Had a nest egg, all gone, ended up being homeless, partnered with Karen House through Stepping Stones, had a place to stay, stable there. He got into the Veterans Housing Recovery Program, and that helps with the stabilization, able him him to transition back on his own, but it gave him companionship, because that's a, that's a 30 to 40 bed facility. So that was really what he was he was paying for over over the internet. So I'll I'll go right to the last page, just a visual. I think I was warned not to push this too fast. There, out out front, what this message sends sends, in my my opinion, is that we have, we have a welcoming culture here at Dunn County. You drive into our parking lot, you see the that we have a small dedicated area that represents veterans. And also, I think it also sends a message of of the strong agricultural, hardworking community that that we we live in. And there's a few few more phases left of that. It's all donated money. There's been no no county money put into that. That's the other thing that I'd like to highlight. With that, I'll I'll take any questions if anybody has has any.
Supervisor Morehouse.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I noticed, Greg, that in addition to the work that you have reported on, you sort of slid through your leadership role with the Wisconsin Veterans Association. Maybe you could pat yourself on the back.
That's a correct statement.
For once.
Yeah, I was elected this last year to be the the County and Tribal Veteran Service Officers Association President, and and a few few things. It is no longer just a County Veteran Service Officer Associate, first first in the country, that it's now added as the the Tribal Veteran Service Officer, bringing really unifying, as we, the term that we use is 83 strong, 72 counties, 11 tribes. And there's, there's a lot more work. Anybody that takes on some other stuff, you know, you can never do enough. But you just hope it's a little bit better by the time you leave.
Congratulations on that. They made a good choice.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional questions?
Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. I actually have a impact statement comment. I was going to save this for the committee, but I figured here was as good as point as any. But in regards to your outreach effort, I have been in talks with a local veteran who had their claim initially denied. And through your outreach program, they got in contact with the VA, your office, and I learned that they got that appeal accepted, and they were able to get 60% disability, I believe, as well as back pay. And they're currently working with you to purchase their first home. So that's a real, like, right now thing that's happening. So thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, so rewarding, rewarding to say the least. Any additional questions?
Does not look like it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I've got Dunn County Housing Authority. Do we have? There we go. Looking in the wrong place for you.
I don't know if this goes low enough. I'm Tammy July-Levere with the Dunn County Housing Authority. So I did provide a report with your packet. The report is actually from the Housing Authority's annual meeting. And I just wanted to provide more detailed report of our numbers from our last fiscal year. Tonight, I'm just going to briefly go over a little bit of what we do and highlight a few things. The Dunn County Housing Authority operates two programs. The first one is the Housing Choice Voucher Program, commonly referred to as Section Eight. And the other program is called the Family Self Sufficiency Program. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is a rent subsidy program. And what that program does is it helps with safe affordable housing for low income residents of Dunn County. How the program works is participants choose their own housing within our allowable guidelines. They pay 30% of their gross income towards that housing, and then the housing authority provides assistance with the remaining costs. We currently have 68 vouchers in use, which is an increase from last year. Last April, we had a total of 61 vouchers in use. So voucher use successes are increasing. We strive to have around 70 vouchers in use within the next six months. Approximately 62% of our voucher holders are elderly and disabled households, and 34% are single parent households. We currently, we are currently conducting or continuously conducting lease up activities through what is called tenant briefings. In 2024, we conducted a total of 14 separate tenant briefings. Each tenant briefing is a group meeting that typically has two to six applicants attend. Our goal is to serve as many households as possible within the budget that we receive, although our program is small. Just kind of looking at the numbers for this meeting, I did count that we worked with 33 different landlords in 2024. The second program that we that we operate is called the Family Self Sufficiency Program. This is a case management component of the voucher program. It is a voluntary program in a much smaller program. We operate this program in partnership with St. Croix County. And the total served per year for the two counties is a total of 15 households. Through this program, our voucher holders get help with goal setting, referrals to other agencies, financial counseling, resume writing, and many other things geared towards helping them gain self sufficiency. Couple of the most common areas of goals are education and employment training and transportation. The ultimate goal of the Family Self Sufficiency Program is to increase turnover of the voucher program, helping to move voucher holders to financial independence quicker than than possible without the program. And in 2024, Dunn County had five participants enrolled in the Family Self Sufficiency Program. Through the years with this program, I have had several participants move on to homeownership. I looked over some numbers for the last 10 years, and I had 25 different households on the program, and 24 of the 25 on the program did increase their income during enrollment, completed budget counseling or financial education, secured reliable transportation, completed or updated their resume, and most either completed employment training or another form of higher education. This program is is a great program and positive attribute to the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And Dunn County is very fortunate to have this program. It is actually, we are one of 19 housing authorities in the state that that have the Family Self Sufficiency Program. So it is still a little bit rare. And in closing, I just wanted to mention a few things about the Dunn County Housing Authority Program and the benefits to the county. Our program helps reduce, helps in the reduction of homeless population in Dunn County, helps improve the education of our children, our children receive through stable housing, helps improve the local housing stock through the required inspections that that we do, and brings in roughly $400,000 in federal funds into Dunn County. Most of the administrative expenses for the program are paid through HUD, but HUD doesn't provide 100% of the necessary funding. They do require housing authorities to seek out support from the municipality that they that created the housing authority, and that's Dunn County. And so that that's, that's our relationship with with Dunn County, and we have requested support each year for as long as I can remember, and and gotten it. So really appreciate that support and the relationship that we have with Dunn County. So really appreciate that support and the relationship that we have with Dunn County. And our website, if you want to kind of look into us a little bit more, or want any information, you can always check out our website, duncanyhousing.org, or you can always give me a call, email me. I'm pretty open to questions, and if you have questions now, I can, I can do that, too.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, every year when Tammy gives a report, it kind of really makes me feel good, because I know if families have unstable housing, and they have unstable transportation, it's pretty hard to move off square one to improve yourself. And what you do works through the whole county. And I, you know, I just think it's money well-spent, and it gives people an opportunity to get settled in and not have transportation or housing be their whole life of how, how are we gonna get through this month so we can do it next month? So, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Supervisor Barrier.
I'm over here. Kind of an obscure question, but I, I heard that you said that you do an inspections program for all your properties? Is that like with the, the city inspector, is that an annual kind of inspection?
No, that is because of, of the households that we serve receiving federal funds, we are required to inspect the units that, that are receiving the assistance once every two years.
Oh, okay. That's nice that you're keeping things nice.
Thanks, thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Headland.
Hi, thank you. Tammy, maybe you can expand us a little bit, you talked about the, the things that people with the Self-Sufficiency Program have done. You've had some pretty good success stories, and maybe you could tell how, if they reach their goal, or even if they don't quite reach their goal, they can still benefit greatly from it.
Okay. There's, like I said, I've been doing this for a really long time, so we're talking twenty-five households, and I'm trying to kind of sort through my, my head. But really, like I said, in the numbers, twenty-four of the twenty-five that I've worked with in the last ten years were successes. Some of them bigger than others, some of them moved on to homeownership. One, I think it was two years back, she ended up, she had started the program with like zero credit score, homeless, and, and moved on to, she has a really good job in the area, and her credit score was, I can't remember, I think she, she, it went up to six hundred and something from, from, like I said, very close to zero, and bought a car. Just, you know, that's just, that's just kind of the majority of the folks on that program, that's what they do. Varying to, I did have one just recently who ended the program not successfully. She had, she had a trauma in her family right before graduating, and she wasn't able to complete the program, but she still, during the program, bought a car. She has very little education and was able to go through like a, a temp service and get hired on permanently for a job that required more schooling than she had, but she kind of proved herself, and, and really high-paying job for, for her, for her skill set. And so she has that, that resume, and she has that, you know, when she gets back on her feet in a few months, she picked back up, and, and she really said her number-one reason to, to, because she's got some mental health issues as well, and, and like I said, she doesn't have a ton of education to back up that job, but she just, she, she taught herself, and she found a way, and one of her big motivators was the program, and, and me showing up at her door every month to ask her what she was doing. She always wanted to give that, that good report and, and kind of have that, that, that feedback, so.
That looks like it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eleven, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances to the County Board from the Executive Committee, 2025 Budget Amendment, CNS and Health Department. So with us making our process a little more formal, you've all seen this before, but does anyone have any questions? Okay, no clarifying questions, I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bauer moves, Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Any speaking? Okay, as I said, you've got it before you, second round, any speaking? All right, then we are ready to vote. This is a roll-call vote.
If the supervisors present will tap their screen on their microphone, the voting has been activated for you to be able to vote. Thank you Supervisor Barrier for the demonstration. In, while the supervisors present are voting, Supervisor Gilbert, how do you vote? I believe you said I'm for it?
Yes. Sorry, I had to hit the microphone.
It's all good, thank you Supervisor Gilbert, Supervisor Gilbert votes yes.
Yeah, just didn't catch it the first.
Trust me, you only voted once, it's my job to ensure that.
All right, the motion passes. Item twelve, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances coming to the County Board from the Standing Committees, a Legislative Committee Resolution on Land and Water Conservation Funding. You have the motion before you, does it, first, any questions? All right, motion in a second, Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Jetson, Supervisor Jetson seconds. All right, any speaking to the motion? All right, you have it before you, any speaking to the motion? None, all right, we are ready to vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. B, Highway Committee Resolution Recognizing Work Zone Awareness Week. You've got it before you, it's really, really self-explanatory, but if anyone has any questions, I'm sure we can get them answered. Okay, seeing none, you have it before you, any speaking? Oh, sorry, wait, let me back up, I'm getting ahead of myself, I need a motion in a second? Supervisor Gary Bjork moves, Supervisor Larry Bjork seconds, was all very quick. You have the motion before you, any speaking? You have the motion before you, any speaking going twice? All right, we are ready to vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements, our next meeting will be May twenty-first, 2025, do we have any other announcements?
Supervisor Hagan has brought forward to the attention that at the end of each school year, oftentimes, there are children within our school district that have a outstanding lunch balance in the money that's due, and each school district has what's called a school district angel fund. And so this month, Supervisor Hagan has requested that any donation that you would normally consider making to our sunshine fund would actually go to the school district angel fund. So please feel free to open your wallets and make a donation, it will be split between the school districts within a majority which are within our county, so please feel free to do that.
Supervisor Thomas. Sure, turn your microphone on though, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know the Red Cedar Speedway has been part of helping that in the past, and we have plans to do so again. So getting involved with that is a good, good, cool thing, so if you can afford to, I suggest you do it. It makes laying your head on the pillow a little sweeter that, at night, so, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Thomas. Chris.
So if you'll recall, back at the beginning of my time as a county manager, I had some sort of self-created, I guess, goals of things that were important. One of those was communication, really working on internal and external communications to try to continue to highlight the really good work that the counties do. I just believe that public service has taken a hit over the last few decades, and it felt, it feels good to be able to highlight when really good things happen. But, so we started this new, this new video that, I can't remember what it's called, Andrew. That's how it's done. And Andrew and I have hosted, and so our guinea pigs this month were Dustin with Highway and Brent Miller. And we recorded it yesterday, and it was hilarious, we had a great time. And so it should come out here in the next, we want to get it out in time for Work Zone Awareness Week next week, and so keep your, keep your eyes out for that, because we had a great, we had a good time doing it, and, and it's, and it's just one of those things where I think there's just so much that happens around here that people are unaware of in really good ways, so.
Thank you all for your patience through two pretty intense back-to-back meetings, and with that, we are adjourned.